Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for June 3, 2025. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaux?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the approval. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes from staff, Your Honor.
All right. Hearing no changes, a motion would be in order to accept the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moves us right into public communications. The first thing we have this evening under public recognition is our Employee of the Month. So each month, city employees have the opportunity to nominate one of their coworkers that exemplifies our mission, vision, values, and goals, both in their day-to-day, how they just show up and work with their coworkers or and/or in special projects. This month, I am very pleased to announce that our June 2025 Employee of the Month is Leah Bryant. Leah started working for the Parks Department on January 18, 2022 as an accounting technician. On May 16, 2022, she became an operations analyst and was promoted into her current role as a grant and accounting analyst on March 1, 2025. As a grant and accounting analyst, Leah performs a variety of complex professional and analytical accounting duties. Leah was nominated because she consistently seeks out opportunities to learn, grow, and contribute meaningfully to both the department and the organization as a whole. Leah leads with patience and compassion, always taking time to support her colleagues regardless of her own workload. Her empathy and dedication are evident in how she trains, mentors, and uplifts others. I love that sentence. I think that that's really, it's really about how we support each other. Whether it's her thorough guidance or willingness to repeat processes, Leah ensures others feel heard, respected, and supported. Balancing her own transition to a new role while training multiple employees shows her selflessness and commitment to the team. Leah is not only knowledgeable but resourceful. She doesn't just provide answers, she empowers others to learn and grow, which contributes to a stronger, more efficient department. Her patience is unending, and she is never upset to repeat herself if needed or to do a recap if there's confusion. Her career growth from account technician to operations analyst and now grant and account analyst demonstrates her commitment to excellence and continuous development. Leah continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as June's Employee of the Month. Thank you so much. Tony, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I would. So I wanted to say good evening to everyone. So good evening, Council President Corr, Councilmembers, Mayor Ralph, Pat, and Tammy. So Leah Bryant is the kind of employee that everyone dreams about getting. Since I started here, and I've actually been here seven months, the time has really flown by. She's been a huge resources, resource to me to help navigate the process of a new organization. Her extensive contract knowledge and her being responsive is really an asset to and invaluable to this organization. What really impressed me was her teamwork. She trained two different staff members, Dominique Taggart, who's our new tour organization. She's now the new operations analyst who took over that position, and Tammy Trong, who's our accounting technician. So she trained two staff members while transitioning into her new position. And she really is key. She has, she has been a key component to our facilities department, and I couldn't be more honored presenting this recognition to her today.
Leah, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to come up and say a few words, you can. And if not, then that is totally fine.
I'm terrified.
I always ask. I feel like receiving an award should not be a punishment at the same time. So honestly, thank you so much. I will tell you, your colleagues across the city are so grateful for your patience and willingness to be patient with them. I hear, I hear it on a pretty frequent basis. So thank you so much. All right. We are going to move on. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for LGT, LGTBQ+ Pride Month. We're going to do this a little differently. So I want to acknowledge and celebrate that earlier, out on the plaza, the city raised the pride flag. Councilmember Larmour presented the proclamation. I am going to read it into the record tonight. So I said a little bit different because it was presented earlier when the flag was raised and want to thank again Councilmember Larmour, Fincher, and Boyd for being there this afternoon. And Michaux, sorry, sorry, Councilmember. Trying to be thorough. So the proclamation says, whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall riots and generally recognized as a catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual rights movement. And whereas LGTBQ+ residents, students, and city employees and business owners within the city contribute to the enrichment of our city. And whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members, as well as provide allyship. And whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that we have, that have been achieved. And whereas the city of Kent, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas LGTBQ+ residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGTBQ+ Pride Month in Kent, Washington, and invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with the commitment to mutual respect and understanding, and to join us in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of the LGTBQ+ community in the city. So there you go. I think that the sentence in there about finding ways that we can all work together with mutual respect and understanding is absolutely, hands down, the most important sentence. And I really would encourage everyone to take that to heart. All right. We are going to move on in the agenda to community events. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have events happening at SSO Sherwood Center. There's actually graduations happening with Kent School District, including Kent School District. SSO Sherwood is hosting 24 graduations from the surrounding areas, which will approximate, bring approximately 100,000 students and families to Kent downtown this next upcoming weekends. On June 4, there is Paw Fest happening, and June 21 and 25, AEW presents Collision and Dynamite. On July 15, it's Baby Metal. And July 17 is Cody, Jinx, Hippies, and Cowboy Tour. And if you haven't been to any events at SSO Sherwood Center, I would highly encourage you to purchase tickets at sso sherwood center dot com or, or attend any of the free events that we have happening. Usually, community events happening there all the time. So check their website for more events happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you very much. We have Juneteenth coming up. That's going to be at Morro Meadow Park, Park again. So be sure to check that out. There's going to be free food. There's going to be all sorts of fun things to go. It's for everybody, not just black people, but for everybody. So come and celebrate Juneteenth. And then we also have the Equity and Inclusion Speaker Series is going to have Dr. Roberts, Dr. Terrence Roberts is going to be speaking. If you remember the Little Rock Nine, he was one of the Little Rock Nine, and he was, one of the Little Rock Nine was one of the groups that integrated Central High School in Arkansas, in Little Rock, Arkansas. And the governor actually called out his Arkansas Guard, Guard Unit to prevent the students after the court had already ruled that these students could be admitted into and would desegregate the high school there. The Guard or the National Guard was to stop these students to prevent them from going. So government, so President Eisenhower had to actually send down one of the battalions of airborne troops to help protect these students so that they could actually attend high school. So he will be speaking on June 18, 6:30 to 7:30 PM at Kent Commons. This is free. It is open to the public. Please come and learn. If you already know about it, come reminisce. He's going to be on, speaking on ways to help preserve democracy in this country. So what can we do to help assure that our constitution is held up, democracy is held up? So June 18, 6:30 to 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Michaux?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind everyone, the Riverbend Bar and Grill is open, but they are having a grand opening on Saturday, June 14. At 5:00 PM, Mayor will be doing a ribbon cutting.
All right. Lots going on around the city, so hope to see everyone out. And I, did we talk about the 14th is the opening of the farmer's market? So also want to make sure that everybody knows that that's happening in just a couple of weeks. All right. We are going to move on to the legislative update. Joining us this evening is our amazing lobbyist, Brianna Murray from Gordon Thomas Honeywell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I also have Amina Abdallah here with me. We're both going to jointly present to you this evening. This evening, we are going to try and capture 105 days of intense activity into 20 minutes. Wish us luck. I'm going to start with just providing you an overview of the 2025 legislative session, talk about the outcome of some of your specific legislative priorities, and then briefly touch on next steps. As a reminder, the legislature just concluded the first year of the two-year legislative biennium, 105-day legislative session. The primary task that the legislature had before them was to adopt the state's three biennial budgets, an operating budget, capital budget, and transportation budget. In addition to their budget work, legislators considered over 2,300 bills, and of those passed into law 433. Any legislation that did not pass this session in the first year of the biennium will be carried over and reconsidered next session in the 2026 session. And then I think those, that's sort of the brass tacks of the process, but the important piece is the political context. Democrats held the majority in both the House and the Senate like they have in previous years. However, the majorities were much larger this year. In the House, there were 59 Democrats and 39 Republicans. In the Senate, there were 30 Democrats and 19 Republicans. We also saw significant turnover with the legislature, which we've been seeing at an increasing percentage. So not political shifts, but new faces. There were 24 legislators that were new to their roles. Some of them were House members that moved to the Senate. Some of them were new members that had not previously served before. In addition to having a lot of new legislators, there was also new leadership in the executive branch with Governor Ferguson, but also with new Attorney General, Insurance Commissioner, and Commissioner of Public Lands. So a lot of new legislators, very strong Democrat majorities. Additionally, the state faced a $15 billion budget shortfall, which made the budget discussion and discussion around tax and revenue proposals the dominant theme and discussion item this session. As I mentioned, there are three different budgets. The budget that you heard about most in the media was the operating budget. The operating budget funds all state agency operations specific to the city. This is the budget that funds all of your state's shared revenues. Revenue growth for that budget began to slow, leading into the beginning of the legislative session. Previously, revenues were growing at 5.2%. However, starting in 2025, they were forecasted to only grow at 3.5%. Additionally, there were many new statutory obligations that the legislature had previously approved, which were scheduled to come online. So a combination of slowing revenues and increased obligations created So, a combination of slowing revenues and increased obligations created a $15 billion shortfall. The legislature balanced that shortfall through a combination of cuts, around $6 billion in cuts, and new revenue, $4.3 billion estimated to be raised in new revenue through a variety of taxes, including an increase on the capital gains tax, increase in estate tax, an increase in BNO tax, an advanced computing surcharge that will be paid by some of the state's largest companies, applying retail sales tax to several new services, and a variety of other smaller tax proposals. There's $2.3 billion left in reserves. The hope is that that $2.3 billion will assist the state in weathering any changes that come down from the federal government. You all are going to receive from me a monthly legislative report, now that we're done with the legislative session, that's going to outline the different dynamics around a potential legislative session that's related to whether or not the federal government makes changes to Medicaid eligibility. If the federal government does make changes to Medicaid eligibility, it's likely that that $2.3 billion in reserves won't be sufficient, and the state will need to revisit their budget. Depending on when the federal government makes that decision, it could trigger a special session. The second budget that the legislature developed is the capital budget. Of the three budgets, this budget is the most stable. The reason it's the most stable is because it's funded with bonds, that a percentage of the operating budget are dedicated to paying off each year. The capital budget funds bricks and mortar construction throughout the state for all the state agencies, so think school buildings, state agency buildings. It also funds a lot of grant programs that are important to the city, and a list of local community projects or earmarks each year. The amount of earmarks that were funded this year was lower than in previous years by about $30 million, and the total budget, total capital budget is around $7.5 billion, making it the smallest of the three budgets. The third budget is the transportation budget. This is all the construction related to transportation, including bike, pedestrian facilities. The transportation budget is traditionally funded through transportation packages, where the legislature enacts a tax increase and then forecasts out how the revenue from that tax increase would be spent over the next five, 10, 15 years. We saw a transportation package in 2015 called the Connecting Washington Transportation Package, and we saw a transportation package in 2022 called the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package. Both of those packages made a series of commitments to allocate funding to projects throughout the state. This year's 2527 budget is focused on implementing that year of both the Connecting Washington and Move Ahead Washington transportation packages, and based on the commitments that were made in those respective packages, there is a $1 billion shortfall because project costs had increased. In order to balance that $1 billion shortfall, the legislature delayed some projects and said, you're not going to get the funding that was anticipated, or not going to get the funding as was originally scheduled, and they increased revenue, $3.2 billion in new revenue over the next six years. The primary source of the revenue was a 6-cent gas tax, however, there's a variety of a series of fees associated with that as well. The total budget was $15.5 billion. Okay, take a breath. It's a lot of budget and revenue information. I think that the important thing is, I want you all to have this as context before we transition to talking about your specific city priorities. It's really hard to advance anything in the operating budget space, really hard to advance anything in the transportation budget space, harder than usual to advance things in the capital budget. Additionally, there was a lot of discussion around revenue and taxes, and our specific request was around revenue and taxes. You'll recall when you all adopted your legislative agenda in the fall, that our primary ask of the legislature this session was to ask for a funding tool that would mitigate the negative impacts of sales tax sourcing laws on the Kent community. We did a lot of engagement over the interim with leadership, with governor's office, far beyond our local legislators, in order to increase our odds of getting something passed this session. And for the most part, leading up to session, we were getting very encouraging feedback. Our legislators introduced two different proposals in an effort to try and find a path forward with one of them. In the House, Representative Chris Sterns introduced House Bill 1532, which was a .03 sales tax increase that you all could have imposed councilmanically in order to fund city services. Didn't identify specifically what city services. You all on council would have had the opportunity to identify that. In the Senate, Senator Kaufman and Senator Orwell introduced Senate Bill 5518, which was a .03 sales tax credit. The sales tax credit would be a diversion of revenue that typically goes into the state operating budget and would instead be directed into your all's budget. That sounds great and amazing from your perspective. From a state budget perspective, where they are facing a shortfall, it seems a little bit problematic and came with a $12 million price tag to the state. We had a public hearing on both bills. The Senate bill didn't advance any further than a public hearing because of that fiscal note. The House bill advanced out of two committees and to the House floor, and, but inevitably didn't pass out of the House. And the primary reason it didn't pass out of the House was because the legislature was considering increasing sales tax in another space, and that was in public safety. There were two different bills that were proposed alongside the bills that we requested that were related to sales tax and public safety. In the Senate, there was Senate Bill 5775, which was our proposal from two sessions ago, which would have made the existing councilmanic, sorry, voter-approved sales tax authority, made that councilmanic. We did work to make sure that bill was amended so that you all would have the opportunity to utilize that tool if it were passed, because otherwise that authority resides solely with the county. And so, we were able to get it successfully amended, but unfortunately, the bill itself did not pass through the legislative process. Instead, the legislature approved House Bill 2015. House Bill 2015 provides cities and counties each with 1/10th councilmanic sales tax authority to fund public safety and criminal justice purposes. In order to qualify for imposing the sales tax, you have to meet a series of criteria and get certified with the Criminal Justice Training Commission for meeting that series of criteria. There are several jurisdictions actively looking at enacting that sales tax, and I know that it is not exactly what we had asked for in large part, because it is a .01 sales tax rather than a .03 sales tax. Politically, I think at the end of the day, legislators looked at all of the other tax proposals that were before them, and chose to leave House Bill 2015 limited to only a .01 sales tax increase in light of the many other tax votes that they were taking. So, disappointing, but there is something in the sales tax space for you all to consider. We also advanced a capital budget request for $9 million to add solar and battery energy storage system to the city's new administrative services building. We worked closely with Senator Orwell leading up to the legislative session, and she encouraged this very bold request. Once we got into the legislative session, the actual request that was submitted was narrowed down to be just over $1 million. Even in that very narrowed down version, the city was not allocated funds for the project in this cycle. I do think that this project has a possibility of advancing in future legislative sessions. The capital budget was uniquely on a tighter budget, and there are some unique circumstances around the 33rd Legislative District that limited funding as well. The one piece of good news on this slide is that you all joined other communities in requesting funding for the State Route 167 Implementation Plan. In the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package, I'm sure it's not Connecting Washington, I think it was Move Ahead Washington, there was an initial tranche of funding allocated for you all to develop a State Route 167 master plan. Now that 405 and 167 have been combined into one corridor, the goal on the State Route 167 portion is to advance the planning on that portion of the corridor to be aligned with the 405 portion. So, we were able to get the 167 Master Plan funded in the 2022 Move Ahead Washington package. However, the 405 corridor has already completed an implementation plan. So, this year, we were successful in securing $1.5 million to move from master plan to implementation plan, so that the two corridors can be better aligned in their planning, which will hopefully result in a more equitable expenditure of funds along the corridor. In addition to your specific legislative priorities, I wanted to call out some additional Kent investments, and a mixed bag here as well. There are a series of projects that we were able to get included in the 2022 Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package, the 224th Corridor Project, the Meet Me on Meker Project, and the Inner Urban Trail Project. The 224th Corridor Project is delayed in the budget that was adopted by the legislature. You can see the previous allocation would have had the project fully funded and completed by the end of the 2527 biennium, and the legislature has now delayed the funding for that project out to be the end of the 2729 biennium. While this delay is disappointing, there were several projects that were delayed, and many of those that were delayed were delayed far more significantly than a single biennium. So, while not great to see a delay, it's not as bad as it could have been. And the good news is that the Meet Me on Meker and Inner Urban Trail investments remain on schedule and did not experience any delays. Within the capital budget, the Parks Department each year applies for grant programs that are funded within the capital budget, and those grant programs are dependent on legislative appropriations. So, your excellent staff in the Parks Department applied for two different grant programs that the legislature then went on to fund, a $940,000 grant for the LP Uplands Extension Acquisition, and a $500,000 grant for LP Uplands Playfield and Spray Park. And then finally, I wanted to just highlight that there were capital appropriations made to other Kent organizations that are not necessarily city-operated. $1.2 million was allocated to C Mar, and $12 million was allocated to the Open Doors Multicultural Village. In addition to all of that very Kent-specific information, there are a number of different bills that the legislature took action on that have an impact on all cities. I'm going to turn it over to Amina to have her cover this slide and give you a sense of those additional items.
Good evening. As Brianna noted, there were several additional bills issued, several additional bills that were advanced this legislative session, and these fall under Housing, Land Use, and Finances. On the Housing and Land Use side, the legislature made significant investments in the Housing Trust Fund. They allocated over $600 million in the capital budget. Lawmakers also passed a rent stabilization bill that caps annual rent increases at 10% or 7% plus inflation, whichever is lesser. After several years of consideration, this controversial measure finally passed. As it relates to parking minimums or minimum parking requirements, the legislature passed House Bill 5184 that limits cities from requiring more than 0.5% parking spaces per multifamily unit and one space per single-family home in new construction. And then, with Transit-Oriented Development, the legislature approved this bill after being under consideration for several sessions. The bill mandates increased around light rail and bus rapid transit stations by 2029. Another bill that we saw this legislative session was a lot-splitting bill. This new bill now requires cities to offer administrative lot splits. Through advocacy, we ensure that each lot may be split once, and that resulting lot must be developable. On the finance side, the legislature held a robust discussion on lifting the 1% property tax. However, after, you know, the governor signaled reluctance to sign such a bill into law, the measure was ultimately not advanced. That said, the legislature did protect key revenue streams for cities, including liquor profits and liquor sales tax revenues. It also passed House Bill 1791, which provides cities with greater flexibility in the use of real estate excise tax revenues. There are new policy obligations cities will need to implement. For example, the legislature expanded eligibility and timelines for Paid Family Medical Leave Act. Finally, a recycling reform bill was approved that will begin shifting cost of recycling from ratepayers to producers and manufacturers of goods. This is just a snapshot of additional legislation that have passed this session. AWC had produced an hour-long webinar, kind of going over all the different bills that have passed this legislative session, so more than happy to review that, but we'll also be producing a comprehensive end-of-session report that will provide you with additional information on all this stuff. Thank you. And I'll pass it back to Brianna.
I want to just take a moment to express great appreciation to all of the city staff that feed into the legislative program. You heard from myself and Amina this evening, but really, what we're doing is, we're taking the feedback and information that a lot of different departments are putting together and giving it voice in Olympia. Without the efforts of each of the staff in those departments to provide us that information, we wouldn't be able to do our job. So, I want to just give recognition and appreciation to all of that work. I also think on a lot of these bills, there may be some disappointment that they passed into law. I'll note that on the Transit-Oriented Development Bill, I worked with your planning staff to get several different amendments made to that bill that are very Kent-specific, to hopefully help you all have as much flexibility as possible when you go in and implement it. You know, similarly, on the lot-splitting bill, your staff provided a lot of the feedback into how to make sure that when that moves forward, it can be technically implemented and will have fewer unintended consequences as it would otherwise. So, I just want to give a great deal of appreciation, and while it feels like maybe we didn't have a great session, there are, on all of these bills, marks where the City of Kent did make a difference. And they're in little ways and small ways, and maybe not the exact way that we would like, but you can see where we gave voice in the process and that there was a change. With that being said, we immediately start thinking about the next legislative session once the current one ends. So, the 2026 legislative session will begin on January 12. You all here at the city will have a series of new policies that were approved by the legislature that will need to be implemented, and so, city staff, as well as you all up here on council, will need to make code changes in order to comply with several of those new policies. As we look toward the 2026 session, I think we're going to do some strategic and hard thinking about what the right next step is for the second year of the legislative biennium. I think the best thing, or the best way to approach establishing the legislative program is to acknowledge that we cannot control the political climate that we're operating in, but what we can do is establish a legislative program and legislative asks that are aligned with that political climate. Up until this point, I think we've been really asking for what Kent truly needs, and we've been getting encouraging feedback, both from our local legislators and from leadership, to bring forward and give voice to that. We may need to revisit that and maybe think about taking a slightly different approach, where we look at what is it that they are passing, and what can we do within what they are passing that helps improve Kent? So, almost like a reverse analysis from what we've been doing. So, we'll be looking at doing that, and then coming back to you all in the fall with a new 2026 legislative agenda. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I wish I had better news for you this evening.
Brianna, Amina, thank you so very much. I want to also say a huge thank you for all of the work that you've put in, both in the interim and during session, the late nights, early mornings, phone calls, the weekend work. Also, thank you to city staff. I'm looking at Bill, and Michelle, and Kristen, Tammy, and Christina, and Pat. The amount of work that goes into a legislative session is, it's incredible, and we could not do any of what we do without you, and so, we're very, very grateful for that. I would be 100% missing an opportunity to say that I'm extremely disappointed in the legislature's unwillingness to... legislature's unwillingness to help a city like Kent. We are everything that they say they want to support and packaged everything the way they asked us to do, and so I think the fact that we came out where we did is not a reflection on the work that you've done, not a reflection on the work that staff has done, not a reflection on the goals that this council has had for the city. It lands squarely in the lap of the legislature. There was a lot of opportunity, and I feel like they let us down. I'm just going to say that, get over it and move past it, and yes, we have to look at next session again and figure out what we do. So, Council, so you know we will be bringing forward a proposal to you on that 1/10th at the next meeting. A lot more to say about that, but we'll hold that for... We'll hold that forward. Very, very frustrating, but again, trying to find the positive in what was really a very painful 100-plus days. There are places where the input of the City of Kent made things less bad. I'm not going to go as far as saying that they made them good, but they made them less bad. There's a distinction there, but we were able to at least stop some things that I think would have been even more damaging to our residents and the goals that we have as a city. So on that note, I'm going to stop talking, and I see that Councilmember Boyce has a question or comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, thanks for all that you do. Couple questions. One is on the, I know the governor ran on a campaign about, what was it, $100 million in police or something like that? I'm kind of curious where they're at. And then my second question is around, I mean, revenue growth. I would have managed probably not to be as good as I think it's going to be, so we have all the expenses locked in. I mean, how do you get beyond that? I mean, because you only continue to raise tax so much, and the taxes they raise are not, I mean, it's hurting the top and it's hurting the bottom, right? Everybody's going to feel an impact from this year. So when you look at the revenue and things are locked in, and the revenues come in less, what's the plan with that, do you know?
Yeah, so your first question around the $100 million in grants. The legislature did appropriate $100 million in grants to hire law enforcement officers. It has the same criteria that you have to meet to be eligible to receive one of those grants as to impose the 1/10th sales tax. So the two are, the grants and the sales tax are tied together, and I imagine you all will be having more dialogue on that as you look at implementing that tool. The Criminal Justice Training Commission is currently working on putting together materials on the grant application process and timelines and what that looks like, and AWC has said that they're hoping to do a webinar here in the near future to outline all of that. The second question you had was around revenues. So the legislature had a fairly robust debate around how much, what their revenue assumptions should be. The governor asked that the revenue assumptions not be more than 4.5%, and the legislature largely honored that. The next revenue forecast is in, it's either next week or two weeks, and there will be, those revenue forecasts occur quarterly. So we'll see where revenues are at. Additionally, new this year, the Office of Financial Management is directed to provide monthly finance reports to the legislature. And to answer your question, the legislature sort of rebalances out any decline in revenues in their supplemental budget year. So that would be in the 2026 session. If revenues decline to the point where they feel like, or the governor feels like, adjustments to the budget are needed further, the governor can either do across-the-board cuts. He has that within his executive branch authority of just saying, we're going to cut everything by a certain percentage, or they can convene a special session to make more targeted cuts. The governor himself does not have the authority to go in and make targeted cuts without legislative approval. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Brianna? I'm going to express one more concern, not for the City of Kent, but for something that is very, very important to the City of Kent. I just want to take this chance to put it on people's radar. We have an amazing organization just to the south of the City Hall here, PIC, Pediatric Interim Care Center. They treat drug-addicted babies and get them healthy and help them grow into amazing human beings. The legislature has historically funded them to keep them in operation. At their annual fundraising dinner, we heard that the legislature cut that funding by $500,000, which left them with only one year of operating revenue in their account. The governor then cut the remaining $100,000, and so PIC has got no funding coming in. So here's my plug for an amazing organization. If you know anybody that's willing to support, or if you want to talk to folks, PIC is a very worthy cause that I'm very, very concerned about. So a little bit of icing on that cake. Anything else for Brianna?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Hopefully, some better news coming. I've got a couple of really good things to talk about in my report this evening. First one is I had an opportunity to visit the fifth-grade classes at Kent Elementary last week. Ms. Denisha Saseo is the teacher that organizes that every year, and I'm going to tell you those fifth graders are absolutely amazing. They come with a ton of energy and really, really great questions. This year, a lot of our conversations, one of the things I always ask them is, you know, what are issues that you see are a problem? And a great number of them were concerned about trash around our city, and so I asked, you know, what is your solution for that? And we spent probably 20 minutes brainstorming solutions for trash around the city, including poster competitions, education. One of the students went as far as saying, if you teach us about trash, then we can teach our parents. I thought that was a fantastic thought because that's really where things, you know, we've seen that work with recycling campaigns and forest fires and seatbelts. So they are going to be putting together some information to share out with the city. So just want to say thank you for that. Today, I had a chance to attend the leadership class at Mill Creek, their annual project. They partner with Sound Transit, and Sound Transit comes in at the beginning of the year and gives them a problem statement, works on them, works with them on things like presentation and problem-solving and those kinds of things. And today was their final report out to Sound Transit. The problem statement this year was around hiring a workforce that represented the community. Spent a couple of hours listening to those students talk about and give executive-level presentations on how to change things like the website, marketing, advertising. It was really incredible, giving presentations. Really, really impressed with the class, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Jepson Hernandez for inviting me to that to see again. Future's bright, right? Our kids are smart, and they're figuring these things out. Last thing I want to report out on is this afternoon, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting at Beryan City Hall with other electeds, mayor of Auburn, representative from Bruce Harrell's office, Teresa Miskata's office. Cities United is an organization that is doing gun violence prevention across the country, working with cities like Philadelphia, Baton Rouge, other cities in working around how do we help specifically our young black males deal with violence and violence prevention, gun violence prevention. A lot of great work is being done. They provided us with an inventory of the work that King County is doing, that Kent has been a partner in from the very beginning, and we're on a path. We are making progress, and they are actually highlighting some of the work that's being done right here in Kent. There is a gun lockbox giveaway event that will be here at City Hall on Friday as a part of Gun Violence Prevention Day. So we'll be putting more information out on the website, but really interesting information provided today on the work that we're doing, and again, very, very proud that Kent is a partner in that work with King County. With that, I am going to turn it over to our chief administrative officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one note here, that, just a reminder, we are going to have a special council meeting on Monday, June 30th, that will take the place, I'm sorry, June 30th, that will take the place of the July 1st Tuesday meeting, and those meetings are going to be held at 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. The reason we're doing this is to meet the deadline that was set by the state legislature in getting our comp plan, I'm sorry, our zoning code amended to comply with our comp plan, and we had a very short turnaround for this. We are not unique in this situation. Most cities are actually way behind the City of Kent. So again, we are moving the June, I'm sorry, the July 1st meeting to the Monday before June 30th. So you should have all received calendar invites, Council, and we'll get further reminders from Kim as we move along. So thank you.
All right, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our committee of the whole in our council workshop earlier this evening, and both of those meetings are on our website and our Facebook page for our community to watch. I serve on Growth Management Policy Board, and we'll be meeting on Thursday. And I sit on four other regional boards and committees, but we did not meet between this two-week window, so I'll have updates at the next meetings when we do have those agendas. I did attend Don May It Forward, a fundraiser for Don, Rising Organization here for domestic violence survivors and support and resources. It was a great event held at Green River College in Auburn with a room full of community members who were willing to provide their resources and their dollars to support providing resources and housing to survivors. I also attended Kent International Festival last weekend, which is a celebration of our community coming together, and it's always amazing and inspiring to attend every year. And I would encourage all of our community members to keep in mind, it's happening in May again next year. Put it on your calendars and show up at Shaver Center. It's free and lots of entertainment and lots of learning happening at the same time. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. The rest of the report is going to be in our council newsletter that comes out on Wednesdays. If you are looking for more information, it'll be provided in there. But that, Councilmember Tchotner.
Thank you, Madam President. I am Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. We held our last meeting on May 21st. At that meeting, we had three promotions, so congratulations to our newly-promoted members. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee, and we met on May 21st. We had a presentation on youth, Free Youth Fair and Youth Ridership. And as a reminder, any riders under the age of 18 can ride transit for free. It is highly encouraged that you obtain an Orca card, and those can be ordered online at youthsfreeyouthtransitpass.com, and you just need to show proof of age. Someone did ask the question at our meeting, what if you are 18, but you're still in high school? You can still ride transit for free until you're out of high school. So good news for our youth that are riding transit. And with that, that answered my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Tchotner. Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to start with the bad news, I'll end on a happy note. All right, I serve on the Washington Urban and Community Forest Committee, and we talked about the budget. And urban forestry has been reduced to only cover their operating expenses. Normally, we would, they would have millions of dollars for pass-through grants. That won't be happening. I also serve on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and we also, we got the legislative briefing from AWC regarding public safety stuff. We spent a lot of time on House Bill 2015. I think a good thing that is coming out of this legislative session is that there seems to be a growing coalition of mayors and councilmembers who have had enough and who are trying to band together to push forward legislation that makes more sense for cities. And then I serve as the Parks Subject Matter Chair, and amazing news, Springwood Park is open. It's been closed for a year, and it has been remodeled, and it was packed last night. Last night was the first night it was opened, and people are loving it. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the grand reopening at Springwood, and that will be on Friday, July 18th at 11:30.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Larmour, please.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will have our June meeting next Friday, so I'll report in our next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Boyce, please.
Thank you, Madam President. During our meeting today for the public safety, we talked about Kent Police Department working closely with Project Be Free, which is a great organization that worked closely with the Kent Police Department on domestic violence and worked closely with them and their staff. So we're able to get some more funding and another good program that will continue on. As for, as I'm your representative for PIC, we haven't met since the last meeting, our next meeting is a week from Wednesday. I do have a conflict, Tony, you are my backup, so I can see if you can back me up, or I may see another council member to be there for me. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm not going to speak no more about PFAS, what I talked about on May 19th. You can read more about that in the newsletter. We'll have our next meeting, I sit on the Local Hazard Waste Management Program as a manager, coordinator, committee member, and our next meeting is on June 17th, a few days from today, and we'll be discussing roadmaps for collection service and capital facilities. Also, I would like to mention that on May 22nd, me, Councilmember Boyce, and McCott, we had the opportunity of touring the Kent East Hill Operations Center. If nobody else has been there, you should go check it out, it's large. I mean, what is it, what, 42,000 square feet? It took us like over an hour and a half just to tour the building. I mean, it's amazing. And I also would like to say, I had the honors of being introduced at the, what is it, Kent International Festival, I'm sorry, by our mayor, and then I also had the honor of introducing our mayor, Mayor Suzette Cook. So it was very interesting, and we had a nice day that day until it started raining. And everybody should, when you get the opportunity to see one of those, go ahead and give it a shot, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Frencher, please.
Thank you very much. For Kent, for the Public Works Committee, we had conversation during our meeting tonight on the NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Standards. You can look online for information on that, along with the Target Zero presentation. And what Target Zero is, is eliminating traffic deaths and serious accidents here in Kent. It's actually larger than Kent, but our main interest is right here in Kent. Tomorrow evening, 6:00 to 7:30, right across the parking lot at Centennial, we have the summer art exhibit and artist exhibit and reception. So come on over, join us for some refreshments, meet some of the artists, look at some terrific art on the walls. And again, that's 6:00 p.m. tomorrow evening, Wednesday, and the rest of my report, the Kent International Festival and the other events that I went to are in my report. You can see that in the council report. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Frencher. Thank you to all of my colleagues. And again, a plug for council newsletter. We do send it out on Wednesdays after council meeting, so if you don't subscribe to it, you can go visit our website and subscribe to it and get all the feedback and pictures that our council sends out. So with that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. We are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Item number six is a public hearing. We'll now hold the public hearing on the potential surplus of the city-owned property located at 115 Naden Avenue South, sometimes referred to as the Waller property. Staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing, and councilmembers, as you know, you can ask questions during the process. If you're here to testify on this matter or provide written statement or evidence, please sign up with the clerk at the front table. After the hearing is closed, council, there will be a vote on a resolution. So with that, the public hearing on the potential surplus of the property at 115 Naden Avenue South is now open, and I would like to invite Bill Ellis, who's already up here, our city's chief economic development officer, for the presentation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This parcel, 115 Naden Avenue, the city acquired to abate, it had experienced a series of fires, five, and in conversations with the owner of the property, it was revealed that the owner was interested in selling the property. City purchased it in order to secure and clean and abate the property. City purchased it in order to secure and clean and abate the property. As you can see from the location here on the map, the property is accretive to the larger assemblage that is the Naden Avenue assemblage that is already surplus for the city's needs. And this resolution would add this parcel to that assemblage as a best way to get highest and best value for the city's purchase of this property.
All right. Council, any questions for Bill? All right. I am not seeing any. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
I have one person signed up. TJ Peterson.
All right. If you could come up and state your name and city of residence for the record, and we do have a three-minute timer that will be up on the screen.
Hello, Mayor. Council President TJ Peterson. I live in Kent. Been here for a minute. The Waller Property over there, I think it's a good idea to pick it up and add it to the assemblage. Lot of failures, lot of heartbreaks going on over that property and throughout the years. And the whole Naden neighborhood, you know, hopefully, you know, things in the future, you know, a lot of people used to live over there. It was all gathered up, a bunch of homes over there. City bought it up. They were going to build a pool. And so, I guess this is just common sense to get this property. So, we got a lot of money in there, a lot of infrastructure's been put in there. I've been wondering, listening, looking, watching for a community outreach to ask the community and the people of Kent what we should be doing with these acres. We got the pool up at the YMCA, great partners. People should go up to the YMCA, learn how to swim, all that good stuff. These public-private partnerships, I go back, I'm thinking about the property that was sold to be the platform. I'm thinking about the property that was sold to be Kent Station, that we spent a lot of money in infrastructure on. And Showware. Let's talk about Showware. We got a big mortgage on that.
I need you, it's a public hearing, so we need to keep the comment to the surplus of that property.
Back to the Waller Property. I sure hope that when we surplus these properties and put out RFPs, that you reach out to the community, maybe ask the council members, "Do we need more commercial property for this investment? Do we have other priorities in this city like housing, you know, supporting our community?" Once we lose those 10 acres, it's done. And, you know, going back to the par three, and I just think that we need more community engagement, what we're going to be doing with this property so we can move forward together and, you know, maybe look out for the whole community rather than just the business community. We have so many needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kim, do we have anyone else signed up?
We do not.
All right. Have we received any written comments?
None.
Okay. Council, is there, sorry. With that, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The public hearing is now closed. Council, any, any further questions before we call for a motion? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2090?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2090, declaring the city-owned property located at 115 Naden Avenue South as surplus and authorizing the mayor to take all action necessary to market and sell the surplus land.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right. We are now going to move on to public comment. Kim, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I have one person, Logan Evans.
All right. The public comment period is an opportunity to speak to council and the mayor on issues that relate to the city or agendas that the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or any candidate seeking office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but must instead speak concerning a matter of the city council's agenda or matters concerning the general business of the city of Kent. Would you have a three-minute timer? And if you could state your name and residence, city of residence for the record, please.
Yeah, Logan Evans. I reside in the city of Kent.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So, earlier, I heard this discussion about concerns about canopy coverage percentages. And one thing I know, I noticed in some of the more developed cities in Russia and around is that they have, sorry, it's less having trees along randomly placed along sidewalks and road sides because that causes a lot of infrastructure damage over time with roots. Then every five years, you have to redo the roadside or the sidewalk, and it's all hollow blue. But I think if we get more dense downtown development, you know, condominium-style structures with shops down at the bottom that really use the space of Kent well, that would then free up more downtown space for consolidated parks, which would then kind of naturally improve the canopy coverage in the area. And then, the benefit of that is we don't have to worry about controlling pre-existing suburban housing out there in the outskirts where it's harder to enforce codes or change people or tell people what they have to do on their land. So, we can, I mean, that's a way to, I guess, increase the canopy coverage without competing necessarily for space that's needed for actual housing development or forcing people to pay more money every year as they try to repair damage from, I guess, poorly planned canopy coverage, we might say. I know one of you spoke earlier about concerns about just haphazardly planting trees. So, yeah, just having that kind of more densely designed city, good space, and then nice planned parks where you could hold the trees you could ever want. That's really all I have to say there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Kim, do we have anyone else signed up?
Yes, I have TJ Peterson.
Thank you once again. What this gentleman was talking about, about our downtown core, and I'd like to add in even to the Naden assemblage, downtown should be for people. When we're expanding this industrial area that kind of excludes housing, the fact that there's not even a housing component, a workforce housing component for people to live downtown, activate downtown, I think it's very important, like this gentleman said, density downtown pays for the suburbs, it pays for the million-dollar homes, infrastructure up on the cul-de-sacs and the East Hill and all this kind of stuff. It builds a dynamic, it makes things more dynamic. It gives a life to downtown. More creative people want to be downtown. People don't want to walk past the library, you know. Just turning over our properties and pushing this commercial, we just had a presentation from your planner on how many vacant commercial properties we already have in this city that are underutilized. Big box stores, granted, the state in their wisdom has given you the tools to turn some of these things into maybe residences and get people here. People's what makes a city. When you put these properties on the market for real estate developers, real estate investment companies, bankers, financiers, they do really well. Just looking at, I think we should really have a public discussion on what to do with these acres downtown. Should it be opened up for a discussion? Should there be participation? We've had plenty of opportunities to market this. You want to do something there that the market has the opportunity to do in other places, and the market is obviously not doing this in Kent. I hate to see it be another bad real estate deal like a pine tree park or the platform or Showware that God, I've heard people would love to sell it for a dollar to an Indian tribe or something along those lines. If it's not happening organically, let's not push it. Let's get people downtown. We have housing needs, crisis center, mental health, daycare, some kind of community. And let's look at a ground lease rather than selling it. Long-term leases for housing, the city can have their way. But granted, you're going to play in a different league than this property. This needs to be an option outside of the real estate market. The market seems broken right now, and I'm looking to you for some guidance and leadership. I think you all can get it from the community if you would give them an opportunity to speak on what we should do with that property in the future. Good luck.
I have no one else signed up to speak. Thank you. All right. Council, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have items A through F. The consent calendar is a compilation of work that the city council has done at both workshop and committee of the whole. These items have passed out of committee of the whole without any controversy. Again, items A through F, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, consent calendar passes. Item number nine is other business. We do not have any this evening. That brings us down to item 10, Kent Commons Security Camera Access Control. And Tona Calhoun will be presenting this evening.
I wanted to talk about the Kent Commons Security Cameras Access Control bid award. So, I wanted to talk about the scope of the project. The project consists of installing 20 indoor cameras, 12 outdoor cameras. We will also be retrofitting 14 existing doors with Verkata card readers, exit devices, electronic door strikes, as well as lockdown button for enter doors mounted at the front counter, and a button to open family restrooms mounted at the front counter. A public bid process yielded a total of three bids, with the lowest bid, lowest responsible bidder being CTS Cabling and Technology Services with a bid of $182,215.70. The engineer's estimate was $193,588.25. So, we were under budget. So, new security cameras, system, and access controls will offer clearer footage, enhance security, and reduce risk.
All right. Council, any questions for Tona?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. How many indoor cameras, you say?
We have 20 indoor cameras.
Where would they go? I'm just curious, indoor cameras. Do you know?
Certain areas, like such as that, people access like lobbies, et cetera. So, we strategically placed indoor cameras where there would be like high traffic, et cetera.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Kent Commons Verkata Cameras Access Control Bid to CTS Cabling and Technology Services in the amount of $182,215.70 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and parks director.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we are at the bottom of our agenda. We do not have an executive session this evening, so I want to say thank you to everyone and have a wonderful rest of your week. We are adjourned.